Good evening, everyone. December 10, 2019. I'd like to call Isaguas City Council's study session to order. We have three items on our agenda tonight, but Mayor Polly has asked for a few minutes at the beginning of our meeting, so I would call Mayor Polly up to address us.
Thank you, Chair Goodman and Council. It's very unusual for the mayor to get to speak at a study session, but we have an unusual circumstance tonight. At the end of this year, we have two council members who will be retiring from council. Tonight, I would like to ask if Deputy Councilmember Mariah Batiste would like to come and stand with me while I say some appreciative words for her service. She will not be with us for our last council meeting, so I wanted to take a few moments tonight and do that on camera. Mariah.
As those of you who are part of the team that runs for office, you understand what a difficult and challenging job it is to put yourself out there. Put yourself out there to your community, to put yourself out there to council if you're filling a vacancy, and then back out to the community if you're running for office. And Mariah did both of those things. She is finishing up the two years of her elected term after serving for two years in a seat that had been vacated. I wanted to present her tonight with a little token of our appreciation from the city, some of our local famous salmon art, so that she all has something in her house that reminds her of the four years of hard work and late nights and committee meetings and council meetings that happened. I also wanted to give her a chance to address you this evening because this is her last meeting, so I'll give her a few chance for a few words as well. But Mariah, please accept this on behalf of myself and the council and the community for all of the work that you have done for us over the last four years.
Thank you so much. I love this.
I know.
Oh, I love that. Okay, you've got to hold that up.
And I would love it if you wanted to take an opportunity to address your council and your community.
That would be great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Polly. I do have a couple of words that I'd like to say. This is so hard to have this be my last meeting, but I decided that what I'd like to do is in my time on council, the same way that I started, and that's talking about Isaguas and how Isaguas is my home. And for 20 years, I have been working. It started when I first moved here 20 years ago with my kids and serving on PTSA and always taking the community development and community outreach jobs so I could show my kids how to give back to their city and to their community. And I'm proud of myself for, I think, I accomplished that with my kids, knowing them. The city council and what led me down the road of city council was really giving back to my community, and it's been the absolute best thing that I've ever done in my life. It's been the most impactful giving back part that I ever could have experienced, and I'm just so thankful that I had the opportunity to work with this whole community. I've had to make a very heartbreaking personal decision coming up to elections to not run in the upcoming election, and I can tell you, my heart is still broken over that. But what gives me pure joy is looking out at all of you because I know what an amazing job that you're all going to do carrying forward and the amazing job that you've done so far. And I want us to remember how lucky we are. We live in a community where we have all of these super passionate community members. We've got this amazing administration, amazing staff. Everybody that I've met has been so great. So the city staff, our whole entire city council, and all of our regional partners, we can come together and do things like Burisma, which is just a shining example of the kinds of things that we can do. And in all the time that I've been on council, every single person that I have worked with, they've always been about giving back to the community and doing what was best for Isaguas, so that's just been amazing. So a couple of things that I would just like to say, people that I'd like to say thank you to. Jennifer Sutton, without your encouragement, I wouldn't be standing here, and you know what I mean. Our newly-elected, everybody who's coming in, so excited that you're here. Our newer city council members that I didn't get a lot of time to work with, but I've learned so much from all of you and have loved working with you. A former city council and administration, Bill Ramos and Fred Butler, for your support. And then city council members that I've worked with for four years, and that includes our mayor. Paul, just have so enjoyed working with you, and I've learned so much, and thank you for all the budget help. You're just amazing with budget. Tola, it's just been amazing being on leadership with you, and I've learned so much about how the human resources and engineering brains come together and make these great decisions coming from totally different ends of the spectrum. And Stacy and Mary Lou, being able to start out on land and shore with both of you and all of your guidance and your mentorship, I just absolutely love so much of it. And to all the community members, seeing everybody walk in the door so passionate about those, all the issues that we have, again, we're just really lucky. So I thank all of you for your passion, for your mentorship, and it's been an absolute honor to serve on city council. And you're all doing the most important thing that there is, and that's giving back to your community. And in my future, I will either come back, I'll find a way to give back. I do feel like it's the most powerful thing that we can all do. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I love my fish. How cool that is. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair Goodman and Council.
Thank you. So the first item on our agenda tonight is ID 0594, Financial Forecast, Munis Action Plan, and Annual Audit. And this will be presented by Beth Goldberg, the city's finance director. Good evening.
Good evening. Let me get this on the screen.
While you're doing that, I should probably mention that we typically allow for public comment during, after each of the agenda items, which we will do tonight, for folks in the public who are here to comment.
Good evening, everyone. It feels like it's been a couple of weeks since I've been here, giving you a break from financial information, but here we are again. So the purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide all of you an updated 2019 financial forecast. I was last here in August providing that forecast. Also want to talk about the Munis Re-Implementation Action Plan. We talked about this during budget deliberations, and at the time, I was expecting this action plan and promised to come back to all of you with an update, so I've got that this evening. And then also would like to provide you with an update on our 2018 annual audit. So first, for the 2019 general fund forecast, the revenue picture has deteriorated slightly since I was presenting in August, down about $900,000 or about 1.7%. The expenditure forecast has improved slightly by coming in slightly lower than forecast. We're expecting to spend about $300,000 less than what we had forecast for our spending patterns in August, which is about 0.7% to the good. The net impact of these changes is a $600,000 hit to the general fund, which would come out of fund balance since I was here in August. But also since I was here in August, we have received, as you all know, the grant from King County to partially offset some of our costs for the Burisma property acquisition, and council at the time had decided to use fund balance in anticipation of those grants, and when those grants came back in, that would help replenish fund balance. So that more than offsets, it's a net impact of 2.3 million to us, so it more than offsets this. But I want to isolate, I want to separate that out because including that in would start to mask some of the underlying activity that is going on. So the chart that I'm displaying on the screen now is similar to a chart that I presented to all of you in August. The column not shaded in green, immediately next to the green shaded area, was what we were assuming in August. And the green columns next to it, the first green column, is what we're projecting now, what we're calling the December forecast. This is based on actual data through August 30, with the exception of the Big Four: revenues, property tax, BNO tax, utility tax, sales tax, which is based on data through September 30 of this year. So when you factor all of that in, this basically summarizes what I talked about on the previous slide. It just shows it more in a crosswalk format, so you can see the various changes. And what I'm going to do through the rest of the presentation is then talk about some of the specific levels of detail of these changes. In terms of the revenue picture, this is a summary of our major revenue categories. And the ones shaded in light green are the areas that we're seeing some declines, and I want to, I'll talk through each of those. There are three areas that are basically holding steady but kind of barely, and that's property tax. We're taking up slightly by $100,000. And actually, I just today got the property tax data for October, and we, as of today, based on these numbers, have hit the $9.1 million target. So with two more months of data to go, we should be right on target to hit that if they come in, as I would anticipate, given trends, right at that $9.2 million. The other revenue I want to talk about while I'm on the slide, because I don't have a specific slide about it, is utility tax is shown in light green on here because if you extended the decimals out a little bit further, it's down about $17,000, which is kind of a rounding error, but I wanted to acknowledge that. But I'm not going to, I'm not going to go into those details in the rest of this presentation. So now I'm going to move on to sales tax. And the sales tax forecast remains, remains as a source of weakness. We're seeing continued, continued weakness. This is showing the sales tax collections month by month for 2019 as compared to 2000, the same, the same month in 2018. And what you are seeing is that for each of these months, a decrease relative to the same month last year, with the exception of the month of April and the month of September, which are the two months that we've had this year where it's actually been above what happened in 2018. So overall, sales tax is down by $176,000 from the August forecast, about 1.1%. But we are seeing some stabilization in these numbers. So when I was here in August, we were the total through August, when I was here in August, and I should say maybe, sorry, I'm rambling a little bit, the August data, the August forecast was based on data that we had collected through the end of June. So we've got two, three more months' worth of data in here. At that point, based on the collections through June, we were trending 4%, 4.1% lower than the same period last year. So now we're trending 3.2%. So we are seeing a slowing in the rate of decline in these, in these revenues, but nonetheless, there is an overall decline. This next slide talks about what's happening in our major sales tax sectors. So our largest sales tax collections is in the retail trade sector. We get 46% roughly of our sales tax revenue from the retail trade sector. Construction is our next biggest sector at 16%, and accommodations and food service represents 9% of our sales tax. And then all other categories represents about 18 different sectors. It's an amalgamation of those. So year-to-date through September, construction is down 8%. This is a slight worsening from what we had seen in August where it was down 6% relative to the previous, the same period last year. Retail trade, while down 4% from last year, is actually an improvement relative to where we were in the August forecast. Retail was down 8% in August. So that's, that is a pretty significant change, and since this represents 46% of our revenues, that really has an impact. Accommodation and food service is performing slightly worse than where we were in August. In August, it was down about 1%. Now it's down 3%. And then the, all other categories is down 1% relative to the same period. And then, as I mentioned before, overall, we're down 3%, and in August, we were down 4%. So when I was here in August, I displayed this chart, although it was a different time period, but the data, as was the case in the August forecast, trends through September tend to be pretty predictive of what we're going to experience for the rest of the year. So that orange line at the top talks about or demonstrates or displays the percentage of sales tax revenue that we would, that we have collected January through September in the years 2006 through 2018 as a percent of total collections. And what you will see, separate from a few blips in the 2011, 2012, or 2011, 2010 period, is that this number is actually pretty steady. On average, 73.6% of our sales tax revenue comes in during the first nine months of the year. So if that trend were to continue, we would expect that our revenues will end in, end 2019 at about $5.7 million. And what we did in the August forecast is we used that trend line in August, and we forecasted it out, but knowing that we've had weakness in sales tax revenues and to be conservative, we took that number down by an additional $200,000. We did the same thing with this forecast. So the, the projection, the $15.7 million here is taking that 73% trend line, mapping that out for the last three months of the year, and then lowering it by $200,000 to build in an element of conservatism. You hear about retail businesses saying it's all, their health is all about how they perform during the holiday shopping period. Frankly, our sales tax forecast is going to be all about how do we perform, how do our retail businesses perform in the holiday shopping period? So it's all about, it's all about December with a little bit of a boost in November because you're seeing some of the sales happen earlier. So we will be watching this forecast very closely as the month, the remaining months of the year unfold. Now I want to turn to the departmental revenues, and the bulk of the $900,000 weakness that we are seeing in revenues is actually related to departmental revenues. And the first one I would talk about is planning permits and licensing, and the forecast is taking that down by about $600,000 or 11%. And this change in the forecast is largely related to the delay in the anticipated permits on a number of major projects. So we were anticipating a number of major projects to come online in the latter half of this year, and in talking with staff at DSD, they are now seeing delays on those projects. It's not that the projects aren't going to happen, it's just they're going to start a little bit later. So we're taking the forecast down in 2019 accordingly, but we should expect to see those revenues come in in 2020. Aside from this, revenues from typical workload, the more routine work, is remaining steady and on target.
I'd like to ask a question. Delay in major projects, do we know what those are? Maybe that's for the city administrator, if you know.
It's several of the school projects primarily, and the Trailhead project are the ones that are driving the delay, or the delays that are causing the revenue change.
All right. Thanks.
Parks and Recreation is another revenue line where we're seeing some weakness, and I'm going to look at Director, or Parks Director as I say this. The Parks and Recreation revenue line, and I think you'll recall hearing me say this before, is a bit of a misnomer because this simply represents fees for recreation programs. So basketball, summer day camps, things of that nature. It does not represent the full gamut of revenues that Parks is bringing in. So for example, facilities rentals, that's rolling up into the other revenue category. But when you look at those fees very narrowly and in particular, which is how our revenues roll up, we are bringing that forecast down $300,000. And this is due to a couple of changes that have occurred in how Parks has been collecting fees. So you may recall that about this time last year, they implemented the Perfect Mind registration program. That program allows the Parks Department to collect fees on an incremental basis. So you can register for a class or a program, put the deposit down, and then when the class or the program starts, you pay the balance of the fees. So it's changed, under the old system, you had to pay it all upfront. So it's changed how the cash flow is coming in to the Parks Department. And what appeared to have happened in the original forecast, and we've been spending this year trying to true it up, is that the forecast wasn't taking that into account. So it was overestimating the revenues. We brought it down in August, but as we're adjusting to this new reality, we're, we're still truing up the revenue numbers. The actual activity and the registration in the classes are remaining on target, but this, this period of transition, when we're adjusting to the new cash flow, it's taken some time to really nail down how the revenues are actually flowing in.
Paul?
Thank you. I think you answered my question. We have receivables that offset.
Correct.
This is cash-based, but we have outstanding receivables.
Correct, correct. And we feel like the 2020 budget has done a better job of anticipating those with, you know, as we've gotten, not a complete year under our belt, but we, so we think we're going to be closer, but this is another revenue line that we'll have to watch, and it may take one more year to, you know, really understand that cash flow. But this is not, this should not be seen as a, an indication that we've got a problem with registrations in our Parks programs.
I may suggest that in addition to the cash actually received, we're actually reporting outstanding receivables as well. I mean, it's on the books, right? Just to be collected.
Correct. Yeah, yes. And, and one of the big, one of the big areas is actually happening right now, which is basketball. And basketball, the basketball program is a very popular program. In previous years, you'd, you'd take the registration money upfront, which would be in the fall, even though the programs are starting in the winter. So this year, we're collecting the deposits, and we'll collect the, the final registration fees as the basketball program starts up. And I don't know if Jeff wants to, he's, he's good. I'm, I'm viewing his body language. He gave me the thumbs up.
I don't want to go too far down this rabbit hole, but I guess it kind of begs the question of if we're going to have, if we are having any issues that we didn't anticipate. So a deposit, but not paying the balance? So I don't know that we can necessarily, Paul mentioned putting it on the books, which I understand and agree with, but I was thinking, you know, what happens if the rest of the money doesn't come in? And separately, not for a budget discussion, is then practically speaking, if we have registrants who don't pay, then what we do, we don't have to talk about that tonight. I'm just wondering about the money part of it.
Jeff Watling, Parks and Recreation Director, real quickly, just to add on to what Beth said. What we're seeing here also is with the transition to Perfect Mind, this new software system, it's not just a deposit payment thing. It's, I'm going to look to you, from an accounting basis, we went from a cash accrual to actual. So what was happening in these big programs between years, rather than deferring, rather than deferring that revenue to the year the service actually happened, in prior years, some of that youth basketball revenue would be captured in the year it was collected, right? So if you follow me, this, this year being the first year, we're, we didn't see youth basketball revenue, 2019's youth basketball revenue, some of that was collected in 18, right? And so now in 2019, the 2020 Youth Basketball League is actually going to be identified in 2020. So we're in this, this year of transition that I think represents a lot of that differentiation, if that makes any sense.
A transition.
A transition that, that was not captured in the original budget numbers, and so we've been, during this transition year, trying to catch that up. I, you know, we believe we've done a better job of capturing the new reality in next year's budget numbers, but this year, there, it's just, it's another correction, so.
Other questions about this? Okay.
And then the last piece that I wanted to highlight on the financial forecast is with the receipt of the King County grant for the Burisma acquisition, our fund balance remains healthy at about 25% of expenditures, and we're anticipating 2019 ending fund balance of about $15.5 million. In terms of looking ahead at the forecast, we are continuing to closely monitor the revenues as they come in. I mentioned we got the October property tax numbers this morning, and someone's across the street, working late tonight, compiling. We've just received BNO utility tax numbers, so we'll, we'll keep plugging those in and should, towards the end of the first quarter, have another update for you. Want to wait for those final sales tax numbers to come in, which will be at the end of February because there's a two-month lag, and then can give you all an update again at that time.
Can I? Yeah. Councilmember Walsh.
I know the chamber has mentioned that there have been more business closures during this year. Have we seen anything of that in BNO tax collection amounts or number of businesses that are filing a closure on that?
Our BNO tax has remained healthy, and that, going back a few slides, is the one, one of the one revenue categories, particularly of the Big Four, that has remained largely on forecast and, and based on December, eking slightly up. So we are not seeing that translate in BNO. And my understanding, although I don't have the numbers, and you might be looking for them, I might, out of the corner of my eye, I think our business licenses have held...
Yes, that information from the chamber was perhaps not as accurate as it could have been, and I know that we shared some information when it came out. I kept my nails by my finger on it in the last 30 seconds, but, you know, we've not seen that.
Great.
So, you know, we're not seeing wild growth either, but things are remaining steady.
So are there any last questions about the forecast before I pivot to the next topic? Okay, so munis implementation, and maybe I'll say right here, in some respects, all of these are interconnected. Our ability to generate a forecast is a little bit challenged because of our munis challenge... Our ability to generate a forecast is a little bit challenged because of our Munis challenges, and so are looking forward to seeing some improvements in Munis so that we can deliver that information to all of you more easily. And then when I get to the audit, it all, again, ties in with Munis. So this is all interconnected in a weird sort of way, or maybe not weird. But anyway, you have heard me talk fairly extensively about the challenges that we have had with Munis and the way we have been deploying it, our ability to access financial data in a, in an efficient manner, and just how general workflow is working, or in many cases is not working. So was, before all of you on April Fool's Day, talking about this initially, and at that point, we were starting to engage the Government Finance Officers Association to do an initial assessment and process mapping, and to develop this, this action plan that would serve as the basis to re-implement Munis. And they completed that action plan a couple of weeks ago, and as part of that, they have documented major observations about what's working with the system, what's not working with the system. The action plan communicates the GFOA recommendations. We've had an opportunity for give and take to confirm and assess their recommendations. And then this action plan serves as next steps for the project, and where we are going from here, and details an implementation plan and identifies critical success factors of what we need to do to ensure this next implementation is more successful than the first one. And the chart on this page is a chart that was produced by the GFOA as part of the action plan, and it goes through each of our major, it goes through each of our major functions within Munis, accounting, project accounting, budget, which is actually not in Munis, but there is an interplay procurement, accounts receivable, capital assets, and our payroll system, and provides a color coding of the amount of change and work required to address some of the underlying issues, with the red being areas that are going to require the most work. And what you will see, for example, in the accounting area, in the procurement area, is there are a lot of opportunities for improvement. Some of the areas highlighted in yellow, chart of accounts, you've heard me talk about that, I believe, before, that there was a redo of the chart of accounts about a year ago, that has resulted in some odd rollups, including the Parks rollup that I was talking about earlier. We need to update that. We don't, also in the context of revenues, I think I mentioned in August that we no longer have departmental designations for revenue, so a revenue line like local grants, of which we get a lot and are very appreciative of, we can't distinguish in the current chart of accounts and then in Munis, which ones of those might be Parks revenues versus which ones might be police revenues, which makes it very hard for city staff, whether that be in finance or the departments themselves, to be able to track their budget position. So we need to correct that as part of this as well. So this is a high-level synopsis of the areas we're going to be focusing on and the work we are going to be doing over the coming year. And then this next slide is, provides a timeline of what we anticipate happening next. So I mentioned during budget deliberations that GFOA is going to stay involved, and in many respects, ACT is, is our agent, and they have done this for many jurisdictions around the country. They have relationships with Munis. They're having discussions with Munis now, and it's going to allow us to really focus in on the actual tasks without doing a lot of pre-planning with Munis, is sort of getting to the heart of the matter. So over the next two months or so, GFOA will be working with us and with Tyler, the purveyor of Munis, to develop a scope of work. We'll have a systems demo because our implementation, the system looks much different now, and so it will be good for people to see what opportunities and possibilities are there. And then to negotiate the contract with Munis. Once the contract is negotiated, we will return to council that will require council approval. So we're anticipating coming back and at the end of February with that contract and having another update for all of you. Once that contract is in place, we will then be working in phases, and GFOA has described them as sort of short sprints rather than long marathons, and focus on specific elements and phases. And it will also narrow the scope of how many staff members are involved, because they'll just need to focus in on, on the area that, that impacts them directly. So Phase One, which will occur April through the end of June, will focus on the chart of accounts and setting up various reporting features. Phase Two will focus on procurement contracts, P-cards, and payroll. And then Phase Three will focus on capital assets, accounts receivable, and more on payroll. And then we'll have testing going on with the goal of going live next December into January, so that we could start 2021 with our new system in place. So I'll pause there and see if there are any questions about this.
Council President Martsch.
So when we were talking in budget season, the question came up about how much money we've spent on the Munis implementation thus far, and how much money we expect is yet to spend on the Munis implementation. And are those answers still coming?
I believe we provided those answers during budget deliberations, and I don't remember those figures off the top of my head, but we can resend that response to you after this meeting.
Okay. I don't remember getting sort of a grand total planned going forward, what we think it's going to take to finish the Munis implementation, but I will go back and, I will go back and double-check.
Yeah, and I, we can resend that information because I'm fairly certain that we gathered that. But I also know we were sending you a lot of information, and there was, which is part of why I don't remember it off the top of my head either.
How far are we into this implementation roughly? Are we like 10% in, 50% in, 80% in, in terms of, again, that idea of the spend that's behind us versus the spend that's in front of us?
The re-implementation?
Sure.
Like this next, we're not, we're not, we're in the GFOA contract at this point, and the big spend will be when we re-engage Munis to work on this implementation plan that I've laid out here. That work won't start until we bring that contract back to all of you with those details, so.
So let me ask the hard question then. So my old boss, Jeff Bezos, said that the hardest thing to do is to make a decision when there's a large sunk cost involved. Is it worth re-examining whether Munis is the right software use, given the challenges that we've had, and consider what other options would look like as a, as a rough order of magnitude?
In my professional judgment, no, and the reason why I'm saying it is for a couple of reasons. The problems we're having with Munis, and GFOA describes this in the action plan, are not because Munis is a problem. Munis is a software package, works just fine, and there are many, many, many jurisdictions around the country and Washington State that are successfully using Munis. The challenges we are having are the result of an implementation that did not follow best practices of what an organization should do when implementing a system. So we purchased elements of Munis that we never implemented, one example being bank reconciliations. We have not implemented the bank reconciliations. We're still doing that manually. There are other elements that we did implement, but we are not using it to its fullest extent, and we're still using site systems either out of past practice or out of necessity because we didn't implement the system the fullest way. So it's not, it's not a problem with the software package per se, it's how we implemented it. And so we can choose another vendor. You'd run a similar risk of, you know, either we're going to implement it the proper way or we're not. And I am committed, the team is committed, IT is committed, to ensuring that we follow best practices when it comes to a Munis implementation project. And GFOA has experience helping jurisdictions do this, so we've got their expertise to help with that as well. The other reason that I would say that I don't think we should look at another vendor is that we're in the middle of an implementation now, and that implementation is the utility billing system, which is a Munis project, or product, excuse me. If we were to select another vendor, the work we are doing now to implement utility billing, that would either remain on a separate system, so it wouldn't be integrated, or we would have to redo that work as well. And one of the things that we are finding with the utility billing implementation, there's a whole new team. The IT team wasn't here for the original implementation, the finance team wasn't here. We are taking the time to do, for example, pre-testing of the system that wasn't done the first time around. So we have a level of confidence that this implementation is going to go much better, and if we were to find a different vendor, we would have to either have it, as I mentioned, as a separate system, or start over on that. The third element that I, or the third reason that I would cite for not recommending looking at a different package is just the amount of time it would take. We would have to go through an RFP process with demos from each vendor to, to identify a new vendor, and that would delay the start of this work, and the longer it takes us to address these underlying issues, the longer our challenges are going to remain in terms of financial reporting, inefficient, you know, use of staff resources to complete our work. And, you know, we've identified what the issues are. I think we've got a plan in place to fix it. So for those reasons, I would say sticking with Munis makes the most organizational sense for us.
Okay, and then one last follow-up. So GFOA is not, who did the previous implementation?
No, we had a vendor, and my understanding is we let the, we let the project manager go partway through, which also is not necessarily an advisable task. They are, they are new to us, GFOA.
Thank you.
Councilmember Winterstein.
Really along those same lines, I was going to ask you about the implementation team. With the knowledge, some of the information I have about the past implementation, part of it was, was the team both external and how the internal team was put together. And actually, one of the things council had done is actually appropriated funds for a project manager. That position never got filled, so it was, there was a, it was a, it just didn't happen. And that, perhaps no surprise on the outcome. So you talked about, you know, best practices, we know there's configuration changes, chart of accounts being an example, something that has to be improved. Just say a few words for me about the, the project team, the organization, especially in the level of project management that's involved.
So the project team involves me, have hired a new deputy director, finance deputy director, who has experience implementing ERPs for, at the state of Arizona. He was on the implementation team for the Arizona Department of Transportation and was their lead as the state of Arizona was implementing their ERP. So he has direct experience. We have a new senior accountant who comes to us from the city of Seattle that was brought on as city of Seattle was moving to its new ERP oracle, and she helped with a lot of the conversion processes and getting them ready for their audit, their annual audit after the conversion. So she has, she, she can speak very, you know, she speaks in as well, very well-versed in what the city of Seattle did well, what we don't want to replicate. So she's part of the project team. On the IT side, we have John Traeger, our IT manager, was not involved in the original implementation, is project managing the utility billing work, and is following those best practices, including engaging a project manager on that work. So he's part of the team, as is Gus Tuwana and Elmer Duley in the, in the IT department. GFOA will remain. IT is currently looking also for an onsite project manager, that's part of the, the budget scope. And then on the finance side, and we haven't figured out how to deploy that yet, but, how to deploy the resources, but there is money in the 2020 budget to help with the implementation, and we're anticipating needing to backfill staff so that they can work on the project plan and still keep the day-to-day work going. So that's another element that we are in the process of pulling together, and we actually have a meeting with the IT team tomorrow to, to continue these discussions about how we're going to move this forward.
In terms of external, so I look up there, I see procured to pay, I see payroll, capital assets, receivables, payroll, they're going to be going on like at least four different modules at the same time. I mean, do you have external consultants for each one of them?
No, it'll be, GFOA has done, already done the process mapping, so it's, it's going to Tyler saying, this is the configuration we need, let's make it, let's make it happen.
So there'll be Tyler consultants working with us on that?
Mm-hmm.
Tyler consultants.
Tyler will be doing the work. Tyler is the vendor, and they will be doing the work to configure the system to meet our specifications.
Councilmember Walsh.
Looking at that timeline, do we have any concerns with building out next year's budget during heavy implementation, phase two, phase three periods?
It's a, we do the budget in Questica, and it's a different team. So the budget team will be working on the budget, whereas most of this is the accounting staff, accounts receivable, payroll staff, so they're not as involved with the budget.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Martsch. Council President Martsch, I'm sorry.
I did find the response, and it looks like we had spent about $600,000 thus far in implementation, 850 on ongoing system management costs, and the upcoming year would be about a million.
Thank you. Okay, so I know this has gone a little bit over. Very quickly, want to give you an update on the annual audit. The state auditor's office began the audit of our 2018 financial statements in November. They anticipate completing the audit in February. In the past, the results have been presented internally to the administration. Sometimes council members have been present, sometimes not. This year, we want to do something different, and we want to present the results in a council meeting, and so we will get that scheduled in the state auditor's office. We'll be here to present those results. I am anticipating that we will likely have another year of audit findings, and I don't relish in saying that, but our financial systems make it very difficult to prepare our financial statements, and so the Munis re-implementation plan I see as critical. We have a team in place that I think is strong, and I think we're curbing the turnover, and we've got a strong team in place that is committed to the Munis re-implementation, committed to seeing us get beyond these audit findings. I will again remind you, it was for internal controls due to material reporting numbers. It was not as a result of loss of any financial resources, and ultimately, we were able to correct those, and the state auditor's office in each of those years was able to issue clean audits for us. But we, we need to get beyond the reporting so that we can produce accurate financial statements. And with that, I am done with my formal comments.
For the last item, I want to say that the presentation at a future council meeting for the added visibility and transparency, I think, is absolutely the right move. And I also, again, I've done it two or three times, I again want to applaud you for you. And I also, again, I've done it two or three times, I again want to applaud you for your candid presentations before the council. Anything else? All right, thank you. The next item on our agenda is ID 0466, park impact fees. This will be presented by Trish Hanen and Policy Planning Manager. I didn't actually ask for any public comment, if there are anybody here and, from the public? I see one, are you interested in making, all right. So, thank you. Okay. Okay, why don't we take a five-minute break? park impact fees, being presented by Trish Hanen and Policy Planning Manager, and I see you have some friends with you tonight.
I do, I do, thank you. Our friends Luke and John, and they're from FCS Group, and they also did our other impact fees and mitigation fees that you all approved in September. And so we're happy to have them back for the study session on parks. We also have some of the Parks Department rock stars here to answer any questions related to the projects in the capital facility, or capital improvement program. So thank you for being here. Wanted to also say that we received some comments and questions from council members this weekend, and so the presentation that they're going to give is slightly different than what you had in your packet, because we wanted to be responsive to the questions that we received. We can post that tomorrow, if you'd want to see the new and improved presentation tomorrow on the website. But just so you know, that if you're following along from the packet, the slides are in a little different order and have some new slides for the information that was requested. So with that, I will turn it over to Luke and John.
Thank you very much.
I'm not on yet, am I?
There you go.
Now I am, okay.
Are you red?
I'm John. This is Luke. So the way that we've, we've set this up, we'll talk a little bit about what an impact fee is, refresh your memories, and touch on the statutory basis for impact fees. We'll go through the results then, the key inputs and calculations, to show you the calculation of the fees, compare them to the current park impact fees, and also, we'll look at them in total with the other fees that have been adopted, and provide some comparative information on those, and then summarize. So an impact fee is a one-time fee paid at the time of development by new development. It is intended to capture a proportionate share of the system facilities that are needed to serve that growth, that new development that's happening. They do not include permit or application fees, these are about shares of system facilities and not local facilities. Some other key language from the statute, and the key, the key phrase here is that we must provide for a balance between impact fees and other sources of funding. We can't be relying entirely on impact fees to construct the CIP in this case. The improvements on the list, those are the eligible improvements that we include in our calculation, must be related, reasonably related to new development, they have to be growth-related. The fees can't exceed a proportionate share of those facilities, the share that growth will use, and the improvements must benefit new development. If, in the case that a developer is required to build, or construct, or add one of the projects on the list as a condition of development, then you have to give them credit against the impact fees for that, for that improvement. 8202070 is all about how we account for impact fee proceeds, retain them in special accounts. We can, we can spend impact fees only on projects and those growth-related portions of projects in the capital facilities plan element of the comprehensive plan for the service that we're talking about. There is a 10-year limit on spending impact fees, so you have to spend them within 10 years, or you can be required to pay them back. There was a question about, is there, must you build all the projects on the list that are used in the calculation of the fee? The short answer is no, but you do have to spend the money in 10 years. And you can't spend the impact fees on projects that are not on the list. So this is a summary of the calculation. The math is pretty straightforward, the, the work is in figuring out what numbers we're dividing by, by others. So the future project component, which is the, the bulk of the impact fee, and in this case, it's all of the impact fee. Picture a list of projects, which we'll show you in a minute, and the cost, the portion of each of those projects which is providing capacity for growth, parks that will be used for future, by future users. The sum total of all those components of projects which are growth-related, divided by the growth that they will serve, gives us our impact fee. The law provides this very vague passage that we could also include an existing buy-in portion to an impact fee. If we were to calculate that, we would look at the eligible cost of existing parks that have not been paid for by donations or other external sources, and we would be able to take the eligible cost of the existing capacity in the park system, again, divided by growth, to calculate an existing asset component. As I mentioned, we have not done that here, you'll see, it's all about future projects as it is in most impact fees around the state. So we'll start with the denominator. This is the, the growth that we will be dividing into the cost bases. If you would focus on that column, 2019, we are estimating current population at 37,590. We have an estimate of the number of employees in Issaquah, 24,690. If you look below that, to the residential equivalent employees, we know that an employee working in the city of Issaquah doesn't have the same access to its parks as a full-time resident. So we've estimated park availability for an employee compared to a full-time resident, they're about a little over 10% of a full-time resident. So the, the row labeled residential equivalent employees is the employee numbers converted to residential equivalents. So if you look out to the far right at growth, this is where we are projecting the 2019 population and employment figures into, out to the end of our planning period in 2039, and we're using growth rates consistent with the other impact fee analyses that we've done, and estimating that the growth from now to 2039 will be 14,165 people in population and 1,175 residential equivalents in employees. So the total you see, 15,341, is the sum of those two numbers, the first row and the third row. That calculated growth eligibility percentage, which you will see again, all we're saying there is that the growth between now, 2019, and 2039 will make up about 27 point, about 27.62% of total residential equivalents in 2039. So you'll see projects allocated by that percentage, we're assuming that those projects will serve existing customers and growth proportionally. I'm happy to take questions as we go here, if there, if there are any. So this, this slide is titled project costs, it's really all about eligibility. How did we determine the eligibility of, of projects for inclusion in the impact fee calculation? And, starting with community parks, for those projects on our project list, community park projects, which include land acquisition, so they're going to add to the inventory of land that the city has for community parks. I'll run through the data that we've got. The current quantity of acres in community parks is 240. In order to achieve the level of service that the city enjoys right now, and provide the same amount of acres per thousand in population in 2039 as you do now, the quantity needed would be 90.45 additional acres of community parks. We know the city is land constrained to some extent, and 90 acres is going to be hard, hard to come by. In fact, the CIP actually includes four additional acres of community parks, that's the quantity added column. That might sound bad, except that the city has a strategy of improving on the acres that it already owns, and turning those into more useful parks than they already are. So, but by straight acreage, they're only adding four when the level of service says 90 should be added. The benefit of that is that any community park additional acreage is 100% growth eligible then for inclusion in the impact fee. There aren't a lot of projects for which that fits, but you'll see that those are 100% eligible. Likewise, for neighborhood parks, 15 acres of neighborhood parks right now, there are four added in the CIP, when the level of service would say there should be six added. So those are 100% eligible, the ones that are in the CIP. And trails, same thing, there should be nine additional trails, miles of trails added, when there's one that's not a link of existing trails or existing neighborhoods. And so, trails that add are, add to the inventory are 100% eligible. So the way, you'll see the individual projects in a minute, that summation there in the middle of the slide is the entire park CIP, 303.5 million dollars. That includes pure replacement projects, that includes projects which only have a portion that's growth eligible. Of those, the 198.2 million are projects that have some growth element to them, and of those, 68.6 million is the amount that is eligible for inclusion in the impact fee calculation. So that's the result of applying the eligibility factors, the 100% and the 27.62% for those projects which are proportionally benefiting existing customers and growth. I talked about the constraints that the city faces in pure land acquisition, and the decision to focus on projects improving on park land the city already controls. Replacement projects are out, and then we talked about the 100% eligible ones, and we're calling improvement projects those in which the benefit is shared proportionally at the 27.62% eligible. So here's a snapshot of just the included projects, so these are the ones that have a growth component. It does not include the pure replacement projects, which would make this a much longer list. You see a number of those proportionally allocated, those are projects which either are not adding acreage, or, as in the case of some of these trails, they are connecting existing trails, or they are connecting existing neighborhoods, so they really can't be, they can't be considered 100% growth-related because they're providing connections for existing customers, existing population, I should say.
So on this list, I see PK 032 hillside acquisition, and PK 0, 032 and 012 valley trail and creekside sensitive land acquisitions. Those to me seem like net new acquisitions, and yet we're saying only 27% is applicable. Why?
On, on the specific park improvements, I'll ask Jeff to come up if he's, or not.
Sure. Yeah. I don't think this is a capital improvement project, I think you're asking about the acquisition projects. I think we'd have to go back and look at the specifics of that, of that conversation. I know in the case of the valley trail and creekside acquisitions, a number of those acquisitions are link-related, meaning they are linkages that tie to either a trail project or connectivity, and so it felt, in our conversations, most defensible that that is a both, it has a proportionate benefit of both new and existing residents.
Okay, so if hillside acquisition ended up being something like So if Hillside Acquisition ended up being something like Bergsma, does that not represent net new? And not, I mean, I think I could see the difference between the Valley Trail and Creekside, which you're buying piecemeal to create a longer sense. I think in some cases, the Hillside Acquisition, I guess I just don't see how it isn't accountable for 100% as growth.
It certainly, it, it could. I, I think in some cases, as we started looking at these, it, it really came down to what was felt most defensible and what was felt when we, when we look at, again, that, that question, that, that underlying element, and I'll turn it over to you guys in terms of proportionality and really what, how proportionality is defined in terms of what we're allowed to do under the, the WAC.
And, and the one thing I'll add is particularly in the cases of, in the case of linkages, linkages, trail linkages, park linkages, where you could almost consider the absence of the link a deficiency. And so we have to account for making up that deficiency as part of the allocation. We've chosen to do that by saying it's, we'll, we'll assume it's a proportional, it's a proportional benefit to existing population and growth.
And given a number of our acquisitions and a big portion of our acquisition strategy is about assemblages, it's about adding on to existing public lands, whether ours or others. Again, it, it felt, I think, most appropriate to be in this proportionality piece.
Councilmember Winterstein.
Well, this is the related question, Jeff, then. How did those relate to the vision of the green necklace? That, say 12, PK 012.
How does that relate to the green necklace very much? I mean, in terms of those acquisitions, that project?
That was all about the central area plan as well, right? That's a growth plan. It's like, we're going to build out Issaquah. I mean, there was a central area plan that drove the concept of the green necklace, and I know you, it goes beyond that, but that was in response to our planning for growth. I'm just, just something to think about when you say it may, just defensible as just proportion rather than 100%.
Totally agree, and I think that very much fits the vision. But in that vision, I think we also recognize that as that's being accomplished, there are existing pieces of that necklace that current residents are benefiting from. And so, again, it's not a, it's not a system, it's not a, it's not an investment solely for the benefit of development. It's, it's a, it's, it's an investment that is both for existing and new residents.
There's a relational part, I think. There has to be rationally related to the new development, I think, is what Jeff's trying to say.
Yeah, okay. Nothing is exclusively for new development anyway, right? Any public parks, I mean, so to that point. But I, but, but I think when you talk about parks and especially trails, they're about moving distances between points A and B. And it just, trails in and of themselves, especially anything that's related to creating these connections. And just challenging the, the precept that in this case, that those wouldn't be considered growth-driven. Absolutely, that plan came around because we wanted to plan for growth. And that's, I think that's very justifiable.
So based on the questions, I'm wondering if it's, I'm wondering if you're interested in getting a follow-up once you've gone back and looked at PK 012 and PK 032 in particular to see if there's more information available about.
I have larger questions about all of this that I'm going to pull together toward this, so depending.
Sure.
So once we have that initial basis, the 68.6 million, we have a couple of adjustments we need to make. There's an impact fee fund balance that's already been collected that will be applied to these projects, so we have to deduct that, so we're not double-charging for those funds that have already been collected. Same reason we take out outstanding debt related to parks, because if we left it in, a developer would pay for those facilities, that, those improvements in the impact fee, and then again, in the taxes that paid off the debt. So we remove the debt as well. The adjusted cost basis then, 52.4 million. We divide that by the population, or the, excuse me, the growth in residential equivalents that you saw on a previous slide. And then using estimated occupancy, we calculate proposed fees for single-family and multifamily residential dwelling units, as you see there, the proposed fee column. And then using data that we have on number of employees per square foot by different land use types, we can calculate the impact fee for non-residential land uses as a per-square-foot charge. We're showing you over to the right there, the current fees for each of those land uses, and then the differences up or down compared to those current fees. There was a question as to why the multifamily charge or impact fee goes up less than the single-family residential fee. And that is simply a function of how the average occupancy for, per dwelling unit has changed in the last five years in the city. There are now more average occupants per single-family dwelling unit than there are per multifamily dwelling unit as they relate over time. So that, that difference has gotten bigger in the last five years, and that's why those charges have increased the way that they have.
Councilmember Walsh and then Councilmember Winterstein.
I can understand the relational number of residents in single-family residential versus multifamily, and that makes sense to me from a transportation sense. Is there, or any of the other impact fees, is there any sense of a multifamily resident may use parks more readily because they do not have their own set of open space?
So, and that was, yeah, I saw that as a question too. We don't have any data that would show that even though intuitively it, it makes sense, oh, there are multifamily developments that, that have pools, that have recreational facilities as part of the multifamily development that I think might change, might change that, you know, conclusion. So, but the, the long story short is we just don't have data that would allow us to distinguish on any other basis other than just the number of occupants per unit.
Could you go back a slide, please? In your, right there.
Thank you.
Nope, sorry. The other back, the other slide.
I'll stop touching.
There you go. The outstanding debt, so that's the full amount. And in your letter or your report, it says, "These values are removed," and I appreciate you made a comment about it already this evening, "These values are removed from the impact fee cost basis to ensure that impact fees are not collected twice from the same project." But that's the full amount of the debt, and new projects aren't the only one that are going to be paying. Existing property is paying on that debt as well. So I'm, I'm just having a hard time understanding why 100% of that debt is removed.
Well, I think you could make an, an argument that a proportional amount of that should be removed as opposed to the whole amount. Is that a discussion that we had?
There, I just made the argument.
No, I think that's a good one. I think that's a good one. That we, that we should be taking only the growth-related share of that 13.3 million out of the cost basis.
That's right, right.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, your statement is very clear, to, to ensure that impact fees are not collected twice. Well, the only ones who risk twice is, is.
No, I, I think you're right.
You got it, right.
So we'll, we'll provide that revision to staff as a, as a follow-up if there aren't others.
I have a question about, and I'm trying to keep track of questions too, so I'm not sure where you covered it in here, I apologize, about the numbers of people in residential units and multifamily and that there's standardized data, whether it's maybe census data? Anyway.
We use the American Community Survey, which is, which is based on census data as our source.
Okay, so we, we share all of our growth data with the Issaquah School District. And when the school district is planning for schools, they use, partly use that data, and they also use data, standardized data, and I don't know where they get it, to determine how many students the new growth will generate for schools while they plan for schools. And a few years ago, not too long ago, four or five years ago, was my understanding that in our urban villages in Issaquah Highlands and Talis, the multifamily was generating more students than they had planned. And so I was wondering if we had followed up with the school district to find out if we should have some reason to deviate from the, the standards that we're looking at.
We certainly could.
Do that. We could certainly contact the school district and see what their newest numbers are and see how they jive with the American.
So there were questions raised about housing affordability and how impact fees play into that. Obviously, impact fees are, are an important piece of funding system improvements. They do affect the cost of new housing construction. Compared to the construction cost of a new residential dwelling unit, either multifamily or single-family, impact fees are still a relatively small slice of that, of that pie. We haven't seen increases in the fees, slow growth. I don't think that's quite the question that's being asked here. The city already exempts affordable housing from impact fees and, so I guess additional thoughts on that.
I can just answer my question.
Okay.
My, my question and I had my onboarding session with Jeff Watley today, and we had quite a lively discussion about this. And, and Jeff convinced me that this is a very complex issue. But I am concerned about how impact fees affect our middle-class and financially challenged people. It says increase in fees is unlikely to impact the amount of new housing construction, and that's not the question I have. The question I have is, are these impact fees in any way deterring middle-class and people with constricted means from actually moving into Issaquah?
Right.
Okay.
And you're, and you're asking a question that's being asked all over the region. Affordability is just a, is just a huge concern, affordable housing and general affordability. We don't, you know, we really don't have an answer for you. Obviously exempting the affordable housing from the fees is a very good, is a very good start. But, you know, as, and as a percentage of the home price impacts, I'll show you a little more specifically in a minute, impact fees have stayed pretty, pretty steady, but that's only because home price, home prices are going up so dramatically. The way that, probably the most powerful explanation I've heard from the development community is that, yeah, they don't slow growth at all, the impact fees, but like, you know, when a developer is making a decision about what to build in a city, they're looking at the costs that, that they're going to have to absorb, and impact fees are part of those costs when they determine what the price point is that they want that house to be in order for them to make a sufficient profit. So they will choose, they may choose to construct higher-end housing in order to ensure that they may, make money. And so I'm not telling you anything you don't know, but, but that, that's, it's a little less direct of a relationship than, oh, higher impact fees, cost of housing goes up, because they try to, the market ultimately sets the price for what any house will sell for, the decisions made far earlier about what will be, what will be built. So that's about all I can add to that discussion. So we wanted to give you a look at what all the impact fees, and this includes the mitigation fees that were recently passed, look like as a bundle for a new home. And so you see the 2018 single-family fee, so that includes the previous iteration of the fees, and then in the middle column, new and proposed, those are the recently adopted impact and mitigation fees and the proposed parks fee at that $9,629 level. So the total for a typical single-family home in Issaquah, a little over $24,000, that's an increase of about $6,600 for that, that whole bundle. Average cost of a, of a single-family home in Issaquah, average price, $708,000. So the previous fees were, as you see there, a little less than 2.5% of that total value. With this increase now, they'll be 3.4% of the total value. Interestingly, we went back and looked at the same information for 2015 when the last update of the impact fees were, was, and that, those impact fees as a bundle were about 3.46% of the average home price at that time. So with this increase, you'd be about where you were as a percentage of the average home price in 2015, for what that's worth, doesn't. And then for a multifamily dwelling unit, we did a similar comparison. That increase is not as profound, about two, a little over $2,100 per dwelling unit of an increase for the complete package. And then also for an office building on a per-square-foot basis, about a $1.40 per-square-foot increase.
Stacy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Walsh.
Can you go back to the single-family? Okay. I, I don't know why this wasn't a bigger question, because I, I look up there and I see, wait a second, the parks impact fee is going up 50%? That's huge. I mean, traffic is going up, whatever that math is, what, 10%, 20%? I do not understand why, and, and I know it has to be legally defensible. I know it has to track back to the CIP and the projects that are on our parks list there. But to me, this is a shocking increase in cost and one that gets passed on to the community members who are buying homes that thus are going to be more expensive. So I'm concerned. I'm very concerned about this idea, and I don't think there's a question here other than at the end, I think I want to question whether or not we should be charging the maximum allowable fee and whether that's beneficial to our community. So I just wanted to bring it up while those numbers are up on the screen.
Some of the questions that you had about why projects are proportionally allocated rather than 100% may have been somewhat informed by that, by that answer. I mean, we were, we were a little bit shocked at the result ourselves, I guess it's, it's safe to say. So that with the office building comparison is the end of our content. Thank you.
So tonight, you are seeking feedback from us because this is coming forward as an agenda bill. Is that correct, Trish?
It would be, it would be coming back to you in January.
Any more questions or feedback or any other information that councilmembers would like before this comes back? No? No? Paul, you keep looking like you have something to say.
Yeah, just do a good job. And I'm sure my colleagues will take care of it in January.
Sure. Okay. Okay, so I am going to, do you have anything else for us? Okay, we're not done with the topic. I'm going to ask if you have any more information that you want us to hear, Trish, then I'm going to ask for, if there's anybody here from the public that would like to make comments. Yes, come up here to the microphone, please.
4255 Southeast Andrews Street. I do have some hillside acquisitions suggestions, but not for public review. Anyway, what about one-bedroom compared to a three-bedroom apartment? So we're looking at, you know, some houses, do we, is that taken care of in our code? Or if we have a senior project with apartments, one-bedroom, is that going to pay the same fee as a half a duplex that I guess is multifamily that could be as big as most houses and some can be? Could be three- or four-bedroom, half a duplex. So, and then accessory dwelling units, I don't know how that figures in. I've been out of this business for a while, so.
They don't pay.
Okay. That's, and the, I think going back, what Stacy had to say was about multifamily and the school district experience. That was much closer to multifamily in terms of number of people living in that house or students compared to a single-family. So that would be something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Connie?
I'm going to start with that age-old policy question that council seems to struggle with. How much should growth pay for itself? Right? And if you're going to maximize your impact fees, then growth is going to be paying for itself. If you do not have them pay for themselves, then the existing residents are going to have to pay for the improvements or you aren't going to have the improvements. So when you look at it from a policy level, it is not who is going to be paying the impact fees is an exclusive question. That's not the nugget. What do we want our city to look like? With what capital improvements? And if we want that, somebody's going to have to pay if we want to get them. And who should be paying? If you talk about the middle, the middle is going to pay. If the impact fees don't pay, it's just going to be the existing middle or we aren't going to have the improvements. So I don't want the conversation to be all about impact fees. It's got to be about how much should new development pay for what they are going to be using, right? Because otherwise, if we have the improvements anyway, us existing residents are going to be asked to pay again. And we're asked to pay a lot already. So the other thing I may have missed, so I was trying to follow along, was we actually don't have very much land for single-family housing. Most of our land is multifamily housing. And I didn't see the calculation as to how we were going to be using that lower increase for multifamily housing to pay for the new improvements and how we could potentially adjust if our calculations on what types of things are being built is off. If we are saying we're going to have more than 100 single-family houses built, that might be off because that's just not how things are going these days. And maybe you all saw that, and I'm totally off-base on there. But I think we're going to be seeing multifamily housing units. And with a lower increase in fee there, we may not be getting the money that we need to do what we want anyway. And, you know, I have to top it off by the policy decision that council has to come to grips with for all things is how much should growth pay for itself? And then we could use that consistently on all of these impact fees to judge how high we want to go rather than as each one comes up, you sort of swat at it. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here that would like to make a comment? The public? Are you sure? We have former and future councilmember Hunt in the audience, so we're just giving her a hard time. Thank you. Councilmember DeMichele?
So just go back and explore a little bit deeper. When we talk about affordable housing, are we talking about the generally accepted definition of the income level? And is that, is that what we mean when we say affordable housing?
Correct.
Okay. So there's this other category called workforce housing. Does that taken into account at all by any of this? Or is it only looking at the affordable housing, the very low income?
The affordable housing by definition is what is exempt from impact fees and mitigation fees, not the workforce housing, which is a little bit up higher in the cost and income range. It's only the affordable that's exempt.
Okay, thank you very much. Just needed that clarification.
The statute actually provides guidance over what you can exempt. And it's, and their definition is if the cost of housing is 30% of 80% of the median household income, you know this already, that is by their definition then affordable or qualifies for affordable housing and for the exemption. If you were to do, if you were to extend the exemptions to other types of housing, you would certainly have to backfill that lost revenue with other outside sources of revenue at 100%, which you don't have to do if you follow the statutory requirements.
I should just clarify that. I'm learning a lot about this. And so I just needed to know exactly what we were talking about. Thank you. Yeah, not coming from any point of view.
Okay, any other questions or comments, feedback? All right, then I think we're done. Thank you so much, John and Luke, for coming to us again. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Trish. Last item on our agenda, ID 0602 Quarterly Work Plan Update. And this is presented by Jean Paul, the city's management analyst.
And members of the council, while Jean is getting settled, this is really meant to be a discussion for the council. As we look at 2020, it's one of my goals, one of the mayor's goals, is to provide more information to the council about ongoing projects, work plan. And what we want to do this evening is share with you the documents we currently use, some of which you see and some of which you don't, some of which are being used internally, to get a sense from you what makes sense moving forward. I'd also like to spend a couple of minutes talking about the reorganization, which I announced last week, and also perhaps preview a little bit of the first part of next year as far as the council's work on its own work plan as we move forward into 2020. So with that preamble, Jean is here. Let him go ahead.
Good evening. I am Jean Paul, the management analyst from the executive office. As city administrator Bob Quitz indicated, our purpose this evening is to kind of provide an informative view of the way forward in terms of quarterly reports to the council and also to provide an opportunity for you to give feedback on those reports. So overall, the vision for quarterly reporting beginning next year is really four primary types of reports. And I'll go into a little more detail on each type of these, but essentially a comprehensive capital project report, a two-year city work plan, performance measurement, which will include both strategic plan, performance measurement, and organizational measures, and then a private development projects report. So the first report that I'll go into a little more detail on is this capital project report. It would include basically every CIP project in the 2020 adopted budget. There's about 55 of those, so it would be a rather detailed report. The format that we are recommending at this point is in line with the Parks Department Capital Project Report. It has a general project description and then a graphical timeline of each quarter of the year and a little bit of a color coding schematic for understanding the planning, design, and implementation or construction phase for each of those projects.
Stacy. I'm sorry, I'm so engrossed in the plan. Councilmember Walsh.
So I just wanted to chime in and say I really appreciate that this is in consideration here. This was something that came up with, gosh, it's been so long since I've been on the committees. I'm trying to remember which, it was services and safety. And this was something that councilmember Ray pushed for heavily. And I think it came out wonderfully. Two thumbs up.
Okay, so the next report is the citywide work plan. Our vision for this would be a two-year work plan that we would bring back to council starting next month. This would include both strategic plan and other high-level projects. So the city has done kind of a citywide work plan summary in the past, as you're familiar with it. Not all things the city does rises to the level of something we report on the work plan. There are plenty of annual recurring things that just aren't necessarily reported. But kind of the council directive projects, things with high visibility in the community or with specific budget allocations that are not necessarily recurring items are things that we would report on that work plan. There's 76 projects on the current work plan. 13 of those are capital, so those would essentially get shifted over to that capital report format. But you could expect 50 to 60 projects roughly on a citywide work plan for any given year, just based on the past few years. This is a little bit of an eye chart, but kind of just an example of the current template in use. There's a summary at the top that kind of gives a project status for all the ones on the work plan. And then a description, a budget, if there's a budget associated with that project. And then a text timeline in the sense of a start, the original finish, and any updates and touch points for the council.
And I'll just chime in. I think this is overkill as far as the amount of data on each line. And so I think it makes sense to look at kind of a status. So we would like to try to get to as much of a dashboard. This perhaps, you know, is, certainly is the direction this is going in. But I think it's really important to talk about where we are in a particular project and what the next step is. So my sense is that, you know, we would likely turn to more of that. I do like sort of the red, yellow, green. But also, one of the challenges are going to be to not overload you with information and make this digestible so that you get out what you need to get. So my sense is this particular report probably gets finessed a little bit more, really just to focus on where things are at and what the next steps are.
Along those same lines, I was thinking about the prior, the capital projects report. And it's a lot of information, which is not necessarily a bad thing. But one of the things, one question I had is, first of all, city administrator, how you felt about all the information? And then the second question is sort of a practical one. And that is, how much time does it take to keep these maintained and updated?
Well, some of these reports are getting maintained. So the Parks and Rec report's getting maintained and it just has not been shared with the council. So I think from that perspective, you know, that work is already baked into time. We do not have the other citywide capital projects, so that would have to be added. One of Jean's new responsibilities is we are freeing up some of Jean's time to coordinate the citywide. So I think once we get these things in place, there is a lot of information on that capital project plan. So, you know, perhaps over time, we make some adjustments there. I think the hope would be that if not all of these, many of these are provided to monthly and then that we bring them to the council in a study session format on a quarterly basis so if there's a desire to have dialogue.
The, just for anticipating a future thought, and that is if we get reports monthly, with all of the information that's on here, it might be helpful to highlight what's new. So we're not have to sift through and look for two or three word changes or a shift in a line.
And what I have done in previous lives is sort of have the date, the last update was provided. So maybe we highlight if there's been any change in that month, but always you'll be able to see. So a project, you might not expect to see a monthly update, but if three or four months goes by and there hasn't been an update, I think that piece of information is useful too. So tonight, thank you for all this feedback. We're just trying to, try to get out of the gate with something that makes sense. But my sense is we'll have to tweak. Because I'm worried that when you put all this together, it's going to be an awful lot of information. And then you get to the opposite, that it's overload and then nothing gets registered because you don't have the time or the mental bandwidth to do that. So we may go every other month, something like that too, just to keep this from not being so overwhelming with information.
Thanks. Councilmember Walsh.
Can you go back to the capital version? So just as a sense, the things that I like about this report is knowing where in a project we currently are, whether it's preliminary design permitting or construction. And I think seeing that line for the "you are here" and then the "color-coded", I don't know if we need as much information under each individual. And then if you go over to the citywide work plan, I'm trying to think what becomes actionable to us as a council with this information. I think the things that I would look at is an understanding of why something was delayed, what the next steps were, as you were saying, city administrator Bob Quitz. And then also, I think the useful information for me is looking at this kind of as a department by department. So, you know, just picking on the ones that are up there. If you look at clerks and say, two out of the three are delayed, you know, are they going to have too much on their plate in the final quarter or something like that? That would be kind of what I would want to use out of the information. So however that gets presented, I think that's what's useful for me.
Council deputy president Batiste?
So I'm looking at the capital projects, the major capital projects and initiatives list, which I think was a slide back. The, first of all, I just, this is something that we talked about in services and have talked about throughout. And I think that this is great, having this snapshot and being able to look at this and get some detail about where we're at. Did you say that we, that this would come to the council every other month? Or was that, I think I missed, how often?
I mean, ideally, it comes once a month. I mean, I think the concern I have and one of the reasons we haven't implemented this even sooner is just the overload factor.
Yeah.
That, you know, would it make sense that it's? I think quarterly is too infrequent. And so then what, the only other option maybe is every other month. And so I think we just kind of have to live with it for a little while. I think the comments about there being a lot of information on here, if we could put a little less information, but at least on a monthly basis, you saw status, that's probably useful. Then you're not having to read a lot of details, especially with capital projects because you generally will, I think, have a general understanding with that. The work plan becomes a little bit more complicated because there's lots of different moving parts with that. But I think we're going to shoot for monthly and we'll see what happens. And you get your feedback as we go on as well. If you tell me it's too much, then we'll adjust.
I just, I, one thought that, and I won't go into the details of what popped into my mind, but having the opportunity for council to take a look at this early on. So if there are certain items that they felt like they needed prior to budget, and maybe those are a little bit beyond where the budget conversations are starting, that might be helpful to talk about earlier rather than later in the year.
Sure. And as we go on with the presentation, there's an approach that I'm going to ask for the council's concurrence with, that we talk about projects by goal, by strategic plan goal area so that have those kind of larger discussions throughout the year. So by the time we get to budget, if some of those issues have arisen, hopefully through those goal discussions, then I think that accomplishes, I think, what you're getting at. And that is to, you know, not have an avalanche of things in the fall. And I've heard from several of you that concern that, you know, we save things up till the end of the year. And so the first six months, we're not as focused programmatically. And then all of a sudden, it's budget. And we're here at study sessions. and then all of a sudden it's budget, and we're here at study sessions, so the wee hours with lots and lots of reports. I've gotten lots of feedback from many of you that have said, there's got to be a better way.
Yeah.
So, I think this will help us manage that, and I think as we look at what study sessions look like, my hope is that we can gather topics by goal area and start at the beginning of the year, and make it as predictable as possible so that we're not, oh, gosh, let's cram everything into September, October, November.
That's great. That was my thought, and it looks good.
Council President Martsch.
I think this is a question for Director Watling. Hillside Park Play Area. I have an email from July that says, "A large portion of the 310K," which is what the amount was at the time, "is intended to be reallocated within the 2020 Parks capital budget so that the play area work within the park can be completed next year." When I see the line item for work here, it's all about cemetery activity, nothing about the play area.
Right, so this is, the sample you're seeing is 2019.
Okay.
So, yes, 2020, we're working with finance right now, as a matter of fact, making our reappropriation request. So, it is our intent to request reappropriation of those funds to 2020 to complete that work in 2020.
I so want to see, at some point, I will either leave council or croak of old age, and I so want to see this, which you and I have been talking about for so very long, come to fruition.
I too would love to get it done, so.
Thank you. Tola, I'm going to leave council, and there's still not going to be a bus on Squawk Mountain, so if you don't get a park before you leave, I mean, it won't bother me, but I agree with you, I'd like to see progress. Jean, I have a question for you, or actually, Mr. General, while you as well. It seems like the format of these is just going to be some type of static report, right? This is just, this is electronic version, what we have in the packet is just an electronic version of, I imagine it's compiled in a spreadsheet.
Correct.
And, you know, so, having done a lot of report development in my career, like, one of the things you do try to find out is what are the use cases? What is the purpose for the report? Who's looking, what information are they looking for? Wally's spot on. You just see one fixed report, you go, you know, what am I looking for here? And is what's the, is the purpose? And I think some type of analysis, kind of, people may have called it requirements gathering, we tend to call it use case, you know, defining what the user story is, but there's no, if this was electronic and there was any type of parameters, Wally talked about, you know, the red, yellow, green, right? Some type of high level, maybe some type of, this is a lot more work, I realize, but if you want to make it useful and not overwhelmed, there's usually some type of high level, and you could drill down into detail, very guided navigation, someone, you know what, I am very interested in, you know, maybe I have a part, a specific report, I can search for it, I can find it, or I'm interested in, I see the trend in the red has gone up a little bit, you know, what's changed here, you know, because there's usually exceptions that, I imagine one of the use cases is people want to know, it's an exception, what's changed, what's no longer normal, something like that. Help people find those things. And then there's just general research. I mean, I was reading, this is kind of fascinating reading, some of it is, but again, I'm doing the Parks one, like, you know, that format, but you're right, there's a lot of information on there, and I would just think you really want to make this useful to the people sitting here, or all particular stakeholders. I think you need, you know, you need to be thinking about some type of interactive, interactivity, like parameters or filtering or even search, and, but also, before you do that, do, you know, find out what the major, the key use cases are. What are people accessing this data for?
Absolutely, and I think that rather than spend six months trying to come up with an interactive way to do that, we wanted to get information in your hands. I think you are the primary audience initially with this, and so we want to make sure that you have the tools to continue to manage projects, initiatives that are important. There are third-party software programs that communities around America use that do exactly what councilmember Wintersheim is describing. We've got a lot of tech issues that we're facing, you heard the biggest one tonight, we'll talk a little bit in the reorg. There's going to be a staff person identified to work on this, where there currently is not one, and so I think once that position is filled, we'll be able to have the bandwidth to do that, but hopefully a year from now, we're saying, here is an online tool that will give you the kinds of things you're talking about.
Councilmember Walsh.
So, maybe taking one step back from the idea of creating a third-party dashboard, but could we just get a commitment that even though this is for us, the community is very interested in tracking projects as they go through? And I think this would be a great addition, at least the capital one, to put as a regularly updated link off of the major projects section of the website.
And I think we're going to talk about that in a few slides.
Correct.
What to do with that, with that link on the website, because I don't think that it provides the kind of, I mean, you just said it, it doesn't provide a full accounting of that, so we are going to get to that in a couple slides. So, maybe when we get to that, maybe we can even, we can even bring that page up for those who may not be as familiar, and talk about that, so.
All right.
Councilmember, we can move forward.
Sure. So, the third of the four types of reports is performance measurement. This is envisioned as a combination of both strategic plan, performance measures, and some new, yet-to-be-defined organizational measures. We plan to bring back the strategic plan component in the first quarter of 2020 to help define some of the measures that were more loosely defined during the original approval, but also have the conversation around benchmarks and targets and the way forward on strategic plan measurement. And this kind of covers what some of city administrator Bob Kowitz was alluding to in terms of the reorganization for the, to align the city with the functions and goals of the strategic plan, at least in the performance measurement components. The performance measurement for organization-wide will live in the finance department, while the strategic plan will be performed by myself and kind of under the duties of the assistant to the city administrator.
So, to fill in a little bit, so, in finance, we are going to take the budget manager position, and we are going to reclassify it. I don't know that we've decided if it's going to be a management analyst or a budget analyst, but we'll make that decision here before the end of the year. And so, a portion of that individual's time will be to focus on organizational-wide performance measurement. I've mentioned to many of you my experience working with a Bloomberg Foundation initiative called What Works Cities, which is sort of the gold standard for performance measurement and data collection for cities. They've just started an initiative inviting cities under 100,000 population to join them, so I'm very interested in at least going down the first steps with that group to see what we could do to set up a good sense of performance measurement so we can measure the things that we're doing. And then, as Jean said, the strategic plan operations and management will remain with the assistant to the city administrator. You'll see the box on the right, as I think you're all aware, part of this reorganization is to assign the goals to myself, the deputy city administrator, and the assistant to the city administrator, so I'll be responsible for the mobility, environmental stewardship, and social and economic vitality goal. The deputy Andrea will be responsible for infrastructure, growth, and development, and then Autumn Monahan will be the leadership in services. You'll also notice under the deputy city administrator, she now has day-to-day responsibilities for public works operations, public works engineering, and development services, so I think that will help her with overall leadership on the infrastructure growth development. I'm taking responsibility for the economic development function, so that, working with Parks Recreation, which we will be renaming Parks Recreation Community Services, will deal with the social and economic vitality. We've done some reorganizing among the staff in the Office of Sustainability, so that office now will focus primarily on environmental sustainability and environmental stewardship. The transportation function will all now be in one place versus multiple places in public works engineering. So, I think what this represents is, I think, tightening a little bit of our focus, not only on the strategic plan priorities, but on all the overall work plan. So, going back to the performance measurement piece, though, I think that is the pieces that really pull all this together, something we've not done in Esquah, which I think in some respects is a good thing, because we're not having to abandon, in Evanston, before we started seriously on the What's Work City initiative, you know, we had 200 measures among the various departments that were largely meaningless to people, but staff spent time gathering the data just so you could put it in the budget and have no one look at it. So, I think with, we almost have a luxury of some sort, not really having any, so that we could start with ones that are perhaps more meaningful from the start.
Councilmember De Michelle.
So, so the performance measurement is going to be how well we do, and then we're also going to be doing a review of services, whether we want to have them or not, you know, what should we do? And so, how, can you just go a little deeper into how that process is going to work? We're going to be measuring at the same time, we're also reviewing our services, or will the performance measurement feed into?
Well, and the performance measurement will be a continual process.
Okay.
So, it will not be a standalone assessment, but it will be something that we would use to continually measure. And the, and most of these would be things that are basic municipal services that, one way or another, we're going to continue to provide.
Okay.
So, you figure police, you know, public works maintenance, maintaining the urban forest, things like, the things that we're not going to get out of the business of in any way.
Okay.
The city services assessment is a conversation that I hope to have with the city council in January. I sent a note today, looking for a date to ask the council to get together for probably a three-quarter day, a session with an outside facilitator, and one of the things that I would hope we would discuss is what the city, excuse me, city services assessment looks like. My sense is, is that we are not going to bring on a third-party consultant and say, here, look at the whole city and tell us what you think. I think we're going to have to look at services, and I'll come to that meeting prepared to offer my suggestions as to which services I think make the most sense. You know, the city, the city council may choose to have a broader look. I know there's been some discussion of priority-based budgeting, and I think it's worth at least seeing if the council wishes to have a conversation about that, and that might precede any kind of larger services assessment. So, with the budget done, the end of the year now upon us, really that's going to be a big focus for first quarter 2020, just to sort out what those next steps are.
I think it's exciting, and my second question, I was thrilled and excited to see social justice up there, and is that, is that an area that we're already doing something and you're putting things in there, or is that a new initiative?
That's, that's an initiative that had previously been in our Office of Sustainability.
Oh, okay.
So, Monica, the staff member there, who's moving over to Parks Recreation and Community Services, will continue to work on those issues in Parks and Recreation.
As part of human services, or?
As part of this newly constituted Parks Recreation and Community Services Department.
I am still thrilled that it's called out, so thank you very much. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay.
So, the fourth type of report would be a private development projects report. There's already a number of existing reports and formats, and there's three up there, I'll go into a little more detail for each of those. So, this is the existing staff coordination report. It's kind of an evolving template. It does a nice job of summarizing a long list of projects into about two pages, but as you can see, there's a fair amount of acronyms and some kind of specific jargon for development, so it may not be as consumable for those less aware of some of the ins and outs of the development world, but like I said, a way to kind of get those down to two pages.
Councilmember Walsh.
Oh, were you first, I'm sorry. Are you sure?
Yeah.
Council Deputy President Batiste.
I'm so sorry, I had a question a couple slides back, back to the, the organization chart. So, the, I just wanted to follow up a bit on what councilmember De Michelle talked about. So, within Parks and Recreation, we call it community services, so that takes the whole human services element and moves it over, so the grants, the human services grants, and then we also have equity and diversity called out and social justice, so currently those are underneath sort of the human services umbrella, but it, I'm just trying to understand, we sort of have a block for it, and I was trying to understand whether that was a project or a whole department or group, or just a little more information on that.
And, you know, this was prepared to share with the staff and with the council just for, from a programmatic perspective, so these are pieces that were previously in the Office of Sustainability.
So, you're just calling them out?
Calling them out. You, we'll likely not see them called out this way in other kinds of org charts.
Okay.
But it was really just to sort of highlight the changes that we're making. But these are all existing programs and services that we largely provide through one and a little bit more staff members in the Office of Sustainability that we're moving over to Parks Recreation.
And is that typical for Parks and Recreation to also have community services in other cities and have those groups all working together?
I could phone my friend to talk some more about these. It is, and actually, in developing this, Jeff came from a Parks Recreation and Community Services Department when he worked for the city of Kent, and I, in Evanston, had a Parks Recreation and Community Services Department. So, it's a model, I was familiar to model, Jeff was familiar, and so, and we talked about this, and hearing the conversation that the council had during the budget process, it seemed that this would make good sense, and so since Jeff has that experience, we're going to be looking, I think, a lot in the future for partnerships and, you know, leveraging resources. That seems to be the direction the council wants to see us go, and Jeff has plenty of experience in that from his few previous positions.
I think with Parks managing community services as a whole, the community center, working with the senior center, and all of those coming together as one, I think that that makes really great sense, being able to see across all of those lines under one department, so that's great. Thanks.
Councilmember Walsh.
So, can you go to the private? Yeah. So, if I'm thinking about using this information, as much as it's nice to have details in a list, I think the most important information for me is saying, looking at a neighborhood such as Old Town, and understanding, maybe on a map, how many construction projects are happening right then, how many are in permitting and thus, you know, will be coming up? So, I kind of envision it as maybe a map of a neighborhood with stars where the projects are that are color-coded, because I think that gives you a visual sense of, oh, my gosh, Newport is absolutely inundated with construction, and they've got permit stuff coming up for the next two years. We really need to be proactive about looking at that, whereas, you know, we don't see anything happening, say, in the Highlands or something. That, for me, is the useful way to look at that type of data.
Can you bring up the website?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And thank you, councilmember Walsh, because I have, I have been struggling with what to do with what we currently, so if we go, can we go to just the first page? So, because we have a button right smack dab on the front of the new website that says "major projects," and so you click on "major projects," and you get a list. But, but Jean had something else up which had a map, so you, so then you check on, and then you get this existing document, and this, this document is basically an encyclopedia of projects, and it shows every document that was submitted, and I think that's all very good, but then you had a map. Where was the map? So, that's an active project list.
Correct.
And so, and where does, but that, you can't get there from the first button.
Yeah, so if you go essentially, I'm trying to remember this, the four visitors and then maps will take you to this page.
So, perhaps that's not as intuitive as, as-
And I may not be the, you know, navigating it to the-
No, 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 no.
-most efficient way possible.
No, 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 but let's, let's bring it up, so.
But it does kind of provide-
So, active projects, if you tap, active projects. And if you go over one, does it have, you click on it, does it give you information? It does give you information. So, along those lines, councilmember Walsh, so if you, so if you were to click on "major projects" and could get to this map a little bit easier- bit easier, that probably would make sense.
And there's an additional way as well. The neighborhoods have individual pages as well with specific major projects for those neighborhoods. So I, I can't remember exactly how to navigate to that off the top of my head, so I can phone a friend if you'd like to see it. But there's, there's yet more information and more ways for, to be, for people to find that kind of private development projects in their neighborhoods.
So it sounds like I'm hearing from the council, in this instance, you'd rather have, since we already have pieces of this puzzle, interactive anyway, kind of stitch those pieces, pieces together, make sure the information is up to date, and perhaps just send you a link monthly, just to help you know that it's there and it's been updated. Would that be better than coming up with a new static paper report, or PDF report?
From my perspective, I like the active project map. It doesn't, it's a little bit detailed, and I don't necessarily know what has changed when I look at this. So that would be one thing I, I would be looking for, not just, hey, how many projects are there, but is there movement on anything that needs to be called out?
Okay. So maybe this supplemented with some sort of monthly update, just sort of overview of things that are changed. Okay. We can do that.
Okay, so that basically covered the, the next couple of slides. I just had some static images that described how to, to get to that active project list. And then the final way that the council has previously received some information on the private development was just through our neighborhood engagement coordinator. So Lee Sin provided her last update at the committee of the whole meeting on July 23rd. But, you know, there is opportunities for, for her to return and also provide private development project updates in the future. So kind of timing and next steps, as I mentioned, we're looking at bringing the, the two-year city work plan back to council next month, having those performance measurement discussions during the first quarter, and then potentially launching some version of the reports on a monthly or every other month basis, and then actual coming back to a study session essentially to the second quarter of 2020 would be the, the first time we would return for kind of that, that quarterly update with a number of these reports ready for you.
So I envision that we would have a quarterly update, that would be the finance update, where we are with the budget, and then an overview of these, you know, at least the topic areas, if not the actual reports, that the council would have a quarterly sort of soup-to-nuts check-in on where we're at organizationally.
Any more questions?
It seems like I've, I've seen nods and approvals as we're moving forward, so we'll continue to work on that. I said I'd, I sent a note out today looking at dates for a, a council work session. If you could let me know your preferences, I've heard several of you today, so thank you. We'll get that scheduled as quick as we can.
Councilmember Walsh?
So I've been able to give feedback on, you know, the work plan chart and things like that. One thing that I don't know if I really know the timeline on is some of the performance metrics for the strategic plan. Can you think there was a slide on that? But I'm not sure if there's a, really a sense of timing. Is that included in the Q2 update?
What, what I think we need to do is convene the city staff that we're going to, we're going to have in our departmental groups now moving forward with each of the goals. So I think we want to go back and look at, there's been some preliminary work done on those measures. I want to just check in with folks that that all makes sense. You know, my hope is that you would see the first of those reports in the first quarter.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to call for public comment. Does anybody would like to make, write any comments? It's all on you, Connie.
I'm going to start low rather than high this time, because low is maybe a little bit easier. Active projects list and trying to track projects in the city has been a 20-year hobby for me. So I have emphatic opinions in my 20-year hobby, the largest of which is that the public projects interfacing and overlapping your private projects is where we get in the biggest trouble. And we have no place that overlaps them all. So when you would look at a neighborhood, you would be seeing the Newport Way Road projects, plus the, all the other projects that you have, including your sewer, your stream replacements, and things happening with King County parcel, all in the same quarter mile. And there's no way to see it. And it happens all over town, and it's happened that way for years. Oddly, we seem to develop in clusters. So if there is a way to create that sort of layered system, even if it's on a GIS layer, so that you, you know, that's pretty advanced. A lot of people don't know how to use the layers, and so I've, I've actually had lots of conversations with how to solve this particular nut. But step number one was the resistance from public works engineering and operations, who all have their own separate documents that they work off of. They don't really want them interfacing with the private development lists, because I guess the public might see them, and the public might have opinions on them. And I think the public should see their public projects equally or more than their private projects, and it's exactly the reverse now. We see the private more than we see the public. And I would love to see that changed in this particular situation. So now I'm going to go up and just let me say one thing. I've never met you, but bless you, there's someone doing what you're doing, so thank you so much.
Write that down.
Yeah, it might be the last time you ever hear it, so you better. Okay. That's not true. The reorganization. So to pop it out without understanding what it sort of means puts me on a low-level freakout, because all of the sudden, we've moved environment over to a department that I have never been able to get to act on the environment at all whatsoever. Thank you very much, except for we are going to use recycled product in our buildings. And without me feeling like they are going to be the protectors of our actual natural environment, including all the other environments, I, I'm going to be anxious, and that's bad, because then I, then I really interact with people a lot, and that's unfortunate. But it might be necessary. So, so I, I want some reassurance that we're actually going to have a skill set on the environment that can protect our environment. And, and the current situation over there is we do not have that. We have no biologists, we have no arborists, we have, I think you get the point. Okay. No, I'm really not all that anxious. Yes, I am, clearly, clearly.
Thank you, Connie. Anybody else have any comments? All right, seeing that. Do we have any other feedback? I'm a little ambivalent about the, the active projects and the capital project. I'm not, it's hard for me to know how I would feel about it until I start using it, but I'm also cognizant of the fact that if, let's, let's see how it goes, that also represents a lot of work to get there. So I guess that's just my feedback, not knowing how I would feel about it, all the information. I mean, I do run the reporting out, I'm just not sure about the detail, the frequency, and how much should be left to the website to report, you know, for us to go to the website and retrieve it, and how much should be pushed out to us, because I know I wouldn't just go click on all the active projects and see, I'm going to have time to do that. So I think that that's very useful for folks who have a particular question about or a particular interest in a project. But for an overview, that's not very helpful. Anything else? Okay, thanks, Jean. Appreciate it. So the last item on our agenda, even though it's not on here, we always have availability for Good of the Order, so I will ask if there's anything for Good of the Order. Council President Marts?
Two things. The first is I want to update, we had had a conversation about an ad hoc Title 18 committee. I want to let council know and the public that I have asked council members Goodman and Walsh, as well as resident Victoria Hunt, who will be back on the council as of January 6th, to form up that ad hoc committee to go through Title 18. And I don't know if you all are going to be meeting yet in December, but there's a bunch of work in front, and I look forward to seeing that. And then the second thing is I just wanted to add on to the accolades heaped on my fellow council member, council deputy president Bateese. She and I have been council president and deputy president for almost two years now. And when we started almost two years ago, we decided that one of the things she was going to do is, and the public doesn't realize this, every Wednesday morning in leadership, we go through the agenda. And council deputy president Bateese would go through it, and if members of the public ever wonder why sometimes it just seems like we have such smooth-running council meetings, and maybe they looked at other cities around here that maybe aren't as smooth-running, and a lot of it was through her dedication and Wednesday after Wednesday after Wednesday of helping make sure that we avoided head-scratches. So I just want to tell you what a pleasure it was to work with you, and how much your leadership contributed to a smooth-running council these last couple of years, and how much you'll be missed. Thanks.
You're welcome. Anything else for Good of the Order? Councilmember De Michelle?
Well, I will just add and say that I'm very sad that we've only been able to share three meetings. My admiration for you is very deep, and you've done a fantastic job as a council member. So you will be missed, and you will be talked about for quite a long time, because I think you've made a real impact. And so thank you so much for your service.
I will miss working with you as well, and I look forward to your future involvement, see what you do. Thank you. Okay. With that, we are adjourned.